No, it'll be okay one way or another. It's either the two microphones.
Well, the good news is that YouTube is on and moving, so.
Well, that's good.
On and ready to go. Honest to God, I may have to take this pup out.
Faith, let's see if she has any ideas what the problem is here.
Uh, yeah, Faith is here. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Hold on one moment.
Hello, Headhunter Worthington. Can you hear me?
I don't know if he could tell you we're talking to him.
And so I'm sorry, Mayor, just so you know, I muted you just because of the feedback. So if you were, I didn't know if you were with your mask on. I can't tell if you were trying to talk to us or not.
All right, well, what I'm wondering is if I just need to get in the car and see if I can go up there. I don't.
Mic turned on. Mayor, shake your head yes or no. With the mics muted, are you hearing any feedback? Okay, then we're good.
Okay, but, yeah. Okay, so you're saying once we go live, you think that the mayor is not going to have that feedback on her? I don't think so.
She shouldn't because she's not going to unmute herself from her laptop.
I don't think so.
[Music]
Good evening. I'm calling this meeting, the regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, October 4th, 2021, to order. As we gather tonight, before we start our meeting, I would, it is with a heavy heart, very heavy heart, that we want to remember the life and contributions of former council member, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Ken Grassi, who passed away last week. Ken was truly one of our founding fathers. He was one of the earliest proponents of our incorporation as a city. And once, oh, I see, I'm, okay. I'll start this over. As we gather tonight, it is with a heavy heart that we remember the life and contributions of former council member, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Ken Grassi, who passed away last week. I apologize for all the technical difficulties we're having. I did, and they can't hear me. The very best, and indeed the most beautiful in all of Puget Sound. We all know about Ken's efforts to beautify our city with daffodils and flower baskets. But what is less known is the hours and hours and hours of time he gave serving on various city committees and commissions. Pierce County boards and committees, and so, so much more. It's safe to say that when Ken wasn't doing something for the city, he was volunteering for his church. And amid it all, he ran successful local businesses that enhanced our community. That is but a glimpse of his professional contributions. But I believe I speak for many others when I say.
Madam Mayor's on mute.
I can't do, do both things. I, but I believe I speak for many others when I say it was Ken, the person who left the most profound impact on me. He was unfailingly kind, always a gentleman, and forever upbeat. But when others only saw the glass half-empty, he saw it half-full. On behalf of this city of University Place, I wish to extend our heartfelt condolences to Ken's family and friends and offer our profound gratitude for all he meant to this place he called home. Please now join me in a moment of silence to remember and honor this remarkable man. So we'll have a moment of silence. I thank, thank you to my council members for this moment to honor a great man and a founding father. May we please have roll call this evening?
Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember Figaroa present.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel present.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey present.
Councilmember Fleming?
Me at all.
I can't hear anything.
Everybody, I'm going to send you a link to the live stream on YouTube. You'll be able to hear what the mayor is saying. Hold tight for just one second. We're still working through the technical difficulties, but you should be able to hear what the mayor says once I send you this link. So I'll put it in the chat. Go ahead and click on it when I give it to you.
So as I understand it, I am to keep my laptop off. Is that correct? I apologize for our technical difficulties that we're experiencing this evening. This is still a learn-as-we-go situation here. And so I apologize if those in YouTube have had their ears affected by our recent situation. And those of you that are in the audience, I apologize too if we've gotten your hearing aids overly active this evening. We are now waiting for our council to re-log in using a new link so that they can be involved in this conversation without having the feedback that we were expecting. So it should be a couple of minutes here as all of them come onboard.
Good evening, Mayor. This is Councilmember Keel. I just wanted to let you know that I am back.
Congratulations.
I have the link and I'm back on Teams as well.
Okay, I don't see you on screen. Do you hear me?
I do hear you, yes.
Okay, can the other council members please check in if you are online already?
Councilmember Fleming can hear you well, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do you have your video on also? Because we do not see you in chambers.
I do.
Okay.
As a, as a quick check-in, Mayor, I'm able to hear you. I am able to hear you coming through just fine. I do see Stan, I see Javier, Steve Worthington, Denise, and Kent. I believe the laptop issue that might have solved it. So I would go ahead and continue. We didn't get to fully hear the, the moment of silence for Kent Keel, or, I'm sorry, the moment of silence for Ken Grassi.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, my laptop is off and that it was on the laptop.
Okay.
I will email all the council members the moment of, the recognition for Ken Grassi, but I'm not going to be able to turn my computer on without causing some more difficulty with the, with the technology.
Keep talking.
Okay, we're, is everybody on and hearing everything? Could you please acknowledge that you are hearing the conversation?
This is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington. I can hear the conversation. The lag of about a solid minute on YouTube, though, is a little hard.
Okay.
Everyone, go ahead and close out of YouTube now. You should be able to hear her just fine coming through on Teams. So we should be good without the YouTube livestream because there is a lag. So go ahead and close out of that browser and remain on Teams.
Good to go.
Technology is wonderful till it doesn't work. Okay, can you please check in once you are logged into the Teams platform?
I'm back on Teams.
I'm, Figaroa, as I see myself, I see everybody and I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay, excellent.
And Mayor Pro Tem Worthington likewise. I see everyone, I can hear everyone, it's good to go.
Okay.
Yes, this is Keel, I'm, I'm good. I'm back and I'm good.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, good to go.
Okay, excellent. As I stated earlier, I will email you the, the, my words that I spoke at the beginning of the meeting in regards to memorial for, for Ken, for our prior council member, Ken Grassi. I can't get onto my computer right now, so, and it was on there. So our next item on the agenda is the council position number four vacancy and possible appointment for an interim council member. May I ask our, our attorney, Matt Kaser, to provide us with the guidance of, for this evening?
And good evening, Council, Matt Kaser, City Attorney. I do hope I'm coming through okay. I have three council members on screen plus a screenshot of chambers. So I'll proceed on that assumption until somebody says otherwise. With Councilmember Grassi's recent passing, there are some legal matters to necessarily attend to. For starters, with Councilmember Grassi's passing, that creates a vacancy on the council. And so you are sitting at a six-member council. As council may recall, approximately two years ago, you appointed a council member pro tem to fill the temporary absence of Councilmember Grassi with his recent passing. That appointment lapses by operation of law. So the question for council is what would council like to do next, if anything? Under state law, you, because there is a vacancy, you have 90 days to fill that vacancy. As it also turns out, due to timing-related consideration, Councilmember Grassi's seat appears on the November ballot. So by operation of law, whoever prevails in the November election takes that seat following election certification. About eight weeks post, or about eight weeks hence. So the question for council is what would council like to do? As it stands right now, you have two choices. Fill the seat or don't fill the seat. If you wish to fill the seat, there's no requirement for any extended process, no extended interviews or anything such as that. The individual simply must meet the basic legal requirement to sit on the council, which is be a registered voter and have lived in the city of University Place for one year. If you don't wish to fill the seat, the statute goes on to provide that you would otherwise have 90 days. But because that 90th day falls well after certification and shortly before that individual would have otherwise assumed office, that contingency doesn't necessarily come to pass. So that's the choice for council tonight, to fill, not to fill, as well as when to fill and when to have that discussion. So with that, I'll turn the matter back to council if there's any questions, comments, or otherwise if council wishes to debate further.
Okay, at this point, I am not able to see if anybody has their hand raised and would like to make a motion or, or bring this forward. So Mayor Pro Tem, I do see a circle around your profile picture, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Belicee, appreciate that. So just to expedite things on a rather complex evening, I move that we nominate, that we appoint Howard Lee as a city council member for the vacant seat until such time as the rule of law replaces him with the newly elected and certified council member in this coming election.
Okay.
Councilmember Figaroa, seconds?
Okay, I have a first and a second. At this time, we are open for council discussion. Is there any council member that would like to discuss this motion? Okay, Councilmember McCluskey, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor Belicee.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. Yes, I did. Whatever the council decides at this point in time, I want to wholeheartedly and gratefully thank Councilmember Pro Tem Lee from stepping up, you know, the hard position to step up into in the first place. And secondly, under the circumstances, it was even probably more emotionally difficult as well for the entire council and for the council member pro tem. And so I want to thank him for his service. And I hope it, it all goes well and, you know, he can continue into, there is a newly elected person to take his spot if council decides to go in that direction. And so it's my understanding that once that election is certified, Mr. Kaser, then Councilmember Pro Tem Lee or Councilmember Lee or whoever we decide to do will step down and then we'll have the swearing in of the newly elected at that time, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And it would not be a council member pro tem. If the motion carries, he would hold the seat, hold the seat in his own right.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Councilmember Keel, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank today, at this moment, Councilmember Pro Tem Lee for his, his work in fulfilling Councilmember Grassi's seat while, while he was temporarily away from us. I mean, we all really felt and miss Ken and will continue to miss him. We've known him for many, many years. So all the best goes out to his family today. And we just want to thank Councilmember Pro Tem Lee for, for his work in Kenstead. I am going to support the motion to, to appoint Councilmember Pro Tem Lee to become Councilmember Lee in, in this position that's vacant. I think he's done a good job up to today and I'm, I'm sure he'll continue to do a good job until that seat is filled by the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figaroa, did you have your hand up for a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor Belisi, yes. And I do ditto on Councilmember Keels and McCluskey on Mayor, excuse me, Pro Tem Councilman Lee. But the reason, my comment is that I, I believe that we really should do this is from a technical and business aspect of it, and that is that everything is not a charity in life, what may go next. And we don't know when, if something, a hiccup could happen with the certification, a hiccup could happen where something doesn't, it doesn't happen on time, whatever the case may be. And I don't want to be scrambling as a council trying to deal with this at the last minute and, and being on the verge of having another body, as the Pierce County Council, designating or appointing our, a council member in our community. So to, for us to rest assured, until the default happens after the certification, we should have a council member that we appoint and we can be assured of having a smooth transition until such time period comes up. But if something happens, some, whatever it may be, and, and it doesn't happen, then we're, I don't know what would, you know, what would be the, the, the whole scenario there. But certainly, we don't want to put ourselves in that position. So I, I really encourage us to take that step of, of having us appoint the next, the next council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, do you have some words or questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do. You know, I also want to echo the comments made by all of the previous council members. Why this appointment of Councilmember Pro Tem Lee is an imperative to keeping the council whole. He has been an exemplary member of the council. He has contributed significantly to many of the successes we've had over the time he has served in that seat. While it is certainly painful suffering the loss of Councilmember Grassi, I think on behalf of the city, it's important that we continue moving forward. And I can't think of a better qualified candidate at this time to occupy that seat. So I too join in supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. As final comments, I don't believe I can put any more comment, add any more comments than what my fellow council members said. I appreciate that Howard Lee has agreed to step forward for the remaining time that we have this vacancy until the election is certified. So I look forward to working with him for the next month and a half. May we please have roll call on this amendment, or this motion, I should say?
Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember Figaroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, aye.
Mayor, you have, the motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Lee. You are now officially, well, you need to come forward and have our city clerk swear you in and you will be our next official council member for position number four. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is Councilmember Lee there?
Yes, he is. He is in chambers and will be joining me on the dais after he is sworn in.
Okay.
I would like to thank the council for their kind words and for giving me the opportunity to play a, my very small part in being on a really winning team, even though it's for a month and a half. I'm very honored. Thank you.
Aye, Howard Lee.
Aye, Howard Lee.
Having been duly appointed.
Had been, been duly appointed.
To the office of council position number four.
For the position of council, position number four.
Of the City of University Place, Washington.
Of the City of University Place, Washington.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the laws.
The Constitution of the law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the laws.
And the Constitution of the law.
The State of Washington.
The State of Washington.
And I will, and will to the best of my judgment.
And, and will for the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
Truly, faithfully, and diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the offices, city council, position four.
City council position number four.
Thank you.
In and for the City of University Place.
In accordance with the City of University Place.
As such, duties are prescribed by law.
As duties, as prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you. He is now signing the official paperwork and then he will be joining me here on the dais in City Hall. While Councilmember Lee is joining me here on the dais, I, our city staff, our IT department has been able to get ahold of my earlier reading in honor of Ken Grassi. So for the council members that were unable to hear what I had to say, I will read that at this time. As we gather tonight, it is with very heavy hearts that we remember the life and contributions of former council member, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, Ken Grassi, who passed away last week. Ken was truly one of our founding fathers. He was one of the earliest proponents of our incorporation as, as a city. And once that happened, he devoted his tireless energy to making this city the very best and indeed most beautiful in all of Puget Sound. We are, we all now, we all know about Ken's efforts to beautify our city with daffodils and flower baskets. But what is less known is the hours and hours and hours of time he gave serving on various city committees and commissions, Pierce County boards and committees, and so, so much more. It's safe to say that when Ken wasn't doing something for the city, he was volunteering for his church. And amid it all, he ran successful local businesses that enhanced our community. That is but a glimpse of his professional contributions. But I believe I speak for so many when I say that it was Ken, the person who left the most profound impact on me. He was unfailingly kind, always a gentleman, and forever upbeat, even when others only saw the glass half-empty. On behalf of the City of University Place, I wish to extend my heart, our heartfelt condolences to Ken's family. And we offer our profound gratitude for all he meant to this place he called home. And then it was, please join me in a moment of silence to remember and honor this remarkable man. So thank you for allowing me to read that to you again. At this time, we will go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a call for motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Belisi. This is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move for the approval of tonight's agenda as district.
I have a first? Do I have a second?
It's Councilmember Keel, a second.
Excellent. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as provided? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised, the approval of the agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. And I, I'm glad to see the other council members are now on screen. So those of us in the, in the City Hall can see your lovely faces. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. As of 5:30 this evening, we did not receive any email public comments. However, we do have audience members in attendance at City Hall. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address city council, you can come at this time and do so. You do have three minutes, and we do ask that you provide your name and address when addressing council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment? Okay. Those that are watching via YouTube, if you want to provide public comment, the information, it was on the screen just a moment ago. Here it is again. We will give you a moment if you would like to call in. Okay. I am not seeing anybody or hearing anybody making an attempt to call in, so we will close the public comment section. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. But before I call for a motion for the consent agenda, I'm sure you've all noticed that there was an item in the consent agenda for a proclamation regarding cybersecurity awareness month. Our IT supervisor was not able to be here this evening, but I, in, in his honor, we are going, I'm going to read the proclamation before I ask for the consent agenda to be approved. City of University Place proclamation, whereas the City of University Place recognizes that it plays a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from, and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective safety and privacy. And whereas critical infrastructure, for example, financial services, educational institutions, energy, telecommunications, transportation utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, et cetera, is increasingly reliant on the support of information systems and technology. And whereas cybersecurity education and awareness are crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet, be it with a computer, mobile phone, or other internet-connected device. And whereas the Stop, Think, Connect campaign serves as the National Cybersecurity Public Awareness Campaign, implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofit, government organizations, and academic institutions working together to increase the public's understanding of cyber threats and empowering Americans to be safer and more secure online. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility, which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of essential cyber hygiene will improve the security of the University Place's information, infrastructure, and economy. And now, therefore, the city council of the City of University Place do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, proclaimed by the city council of the City of University Place, Washington, on October 4, 2021. So that is part of the consent agenda. So may I call for a motion to approve or amend the consent agenda, please?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move approval of the consent agenda this evening.
Okay, I have a first? Do I have a second?
It's Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as submitted? Okay, I don't hear or see anyone raise their hands, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our city manager and council comments and reports. May I ask our city manager, Steve Sugg, to come forward with his city manager report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and my normal report that I was planning to give on our capo improvements, that updates. I'm going to set that aside for a future meeting. Tonight, I just wanted to say a few words about Councilmember Ken Grassi, who passed away this, this week. This was a very tough week for all of us here at the staff who worked for, who knew Ken and worked with Ken for many, many years. I can tell you that Ken left an indelible impact on this community. I don't have to say that. You all know that. He contributed to its growth and development in so many ways. But flower, you all know that the aesthetic features of this community have been changed forever in such a positive way. Flower baskets, thousands of daffodils, decorative streetlights, landscaping, the, even all the details that happened in our, the aesthetic details of our Christmas tree lighting event that everyone loves so much in this community. I can tell you that the economic impact on this, that Ken had with, with the contributions he made, did not go unnoticed by those that are outside the community. I had, in 2013, the president of Whole Foods showed up in my office and was looking to locate the only store between Seattle and Portland, and he liked how Bridgeport looked. Well, he liked how Bridgeport looked because Ken had such a, was, was a principal role in, on the council in pushing for the kinds of features and the aesthetic features that that roadway, again, from the flower baskets to the decorative streetlights, to, to the way it looked. He cared about the appearance. He thought that everyone deserved to, to, to be treated with the, with the best visual field that you possibly have as you drive down a street. He felt it mattered to the community as people come home from work after a long drive on I-5, and they come into University Place and they can, and they can start to relax and, because they've arrived home. And they were greeted by beauty and just this wonderful aesthetic appeal of this community. And it will be, his impact will be felt for many, many years. So that's all I wanted to say, Mayor and council, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. Okay, at this time, we will be moving to council comments and report outs. Councilmember Figueroa, do you have any report outs or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilmember Figueroa, and I don't have any reports out, but I do have a comment, and that is, of course, in memory of our dear friend, Ken Grassi. And, you know, when, when we talk about the face of, of our community, of a community, we always think about the mayor, or someone of that status, but I, I believe that from the beginning and even till now, we can certainly give that honor to Ken Grassi as a face of UP, because of how he represented himself, and how he was loved and respected, and, and all the things that our city manager mentioned, but even more so, he was a very, very caring person. I don't know anybody that I've run across that, that not comment about how the, the heart that Ken carried in this community, contributing to schools. I remember when I first met him, and I had just moved into UP, University Place, and, and, and he helped with, and I was very much a participant in, in the, in the elementary schools with PTA and was looking for donations, and, and of course, he's, you know, without, without question or without regard, he just contributed, and, and as I got to know him, he was always there contributing to people. And so he certainly was a contributor to this community in so many different ways, but certainly one that put a, such a positive face in, as our community member, as we wish to have. People have leaders that you wish they didn't show up on anything, and, but with, with the leadership that we have now, and especially the likes of Ken Grassi, we just, very, I'm very honored and, and always happy to see the faces and the face such as Ken Grassi as, as, as one of our, as, as part of our team, and so, we just, it will be certainly missed in our community, and certainly, everything that he did is a legacy, as our city manager mentioned, and will continue. Many of us were touched and influenced by Ken Grassi, and will continue to do a lot of policymaking and decision-making because of, of the influence that he had on our lives and our decision-making. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Keel, do you have any report outs or question, or, or comments at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. You know, I, like all of us, have had a chance to reflect my times with, with Ken, Councilman Grassi, and I, I remember exactly when I met him for the first time. It was on Mother's Day in, in 1979, and I was fresh out of military, just coming back to Tacoma area, this Washington area, and I had to buy flowers for my mother. And I was working downtown Tacoma, Frank Russell, and I remember going to the flower shop, and he and his wife, Kim, were there, and they were the nicest people. They helped me. I didn't, you know, I didn't know how to buy flowers, and they just asked me a bunch of questions, and what do I want, and what did I like, and, and I was like, you know, typical 20-something kid, I don't know, just give me some flowers, but they just kept asking me. And I remember leaving that place, and I had the most beautiful bouquet of flowers that I'd ever seen in my life, that I ever purchased, and it was him just keep, continuing asking questions, and, and that, and, and this one, they had their, their shop downtown on Market Street somewhere in there, I remember so well. And little did I know that over the years, that, you know, our daughters would end up going to school together, the exact same grade, your friends. Ken and Kim went on a lot of the, the, the field trips with the kids, they chaperoned a lot, and they chaperoned a trip that they, the school, the class took to Washington, DC, and it just so happened I was on, on business in Washington, DC at the same time, and so I got a chance to spend time with my daughter and Ken, and they chaperoned, and it was just, it was just a great time. And he did a lot of things like that at, at their church, at their school, you know, and certainly all the things that we talk about within the city, and I certainly enjoyed those as well, I got to see him, but I, I really appreciate knowing him outside of that, you know, and I know many of you have too as well, and, and it, it was just a pleasure. I heard someone say that, you know, he was one of the nicest men that he ever, that, that they ever met, and I certainly can see that with, with his demeanor. I think I may have seen him upset maybe one time, you know, and even then, he was nice and upset at the same time, so. It, it's, he just, that was just about him, so. Anyway, we certainly will, will miss him and, and, and the things that he done for our city and on this council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, now I forget, I have to get you on. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one comment, and then I have a report. I too, I've wanted to be on the council, but I didn't want to do it the way that it happened with Ken Grassi being ill. That's sad, and I'm glad that I was able to step in, but I would never be able to fill his shoes. That's, that's something I, I just don't have the talent for. He was a very, he was a statesman, he was a very caring person, and he always was worried about the other person and not himself. He's going to be missed, but he has left a, a legacy of a really great city, our City of University Place. I have a report on the Veterans Memorial. Things are going along well. The rebar has been laid. This week, they'll be pouring concrete. The flagpoles should be in, I'm not sure, it'll be another week or two, but in, in any event, we're well on track to meeting our deadline of Veterans Day, which is November 11th this year. It won't be completely finished. The stone monuments are somewhere in a container on a ship between India and here, and they'll probably be in Long Beach Harbor for several months to get unloaded, but in any event, there will be flagpoles, and there will be something to dedicate, for sure, and we would appreciate, be happy to have you, the citizens of the city, be there to help us commemorate this really great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember McCloskey, do you have?
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. I too am saddened with passing of Mr. Grassi, councilmember, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, extraordinary person, that he was. He exude kindness, compassion, love to everyone that he met, and, and he made you feel like you were the only one that was important to him at the time that he was conversing with you. He was, to me, I always looked up to him for his, not only his compassion and his kindness, but even when there was ugliness that presented itself, he somehow created an atmosphere of compassion and kindness, and which sort of dissolved that ugliness so that people can move forward and get whatever they need as a, you know, some sort of resolution to whatever issues was at hand. He never was afraid to come up against adversity, and even when he was quite upset and confounded and confused, he never, ever lost that sense of his heart and compassion. And it seems like he had an internal wisdom of a saint, almost, because he understood how to maneuver in, in a way that is loving and caring, so that people will, at the end of the day, whether they agreed with the outcome or not, went away with some sort of satisfaction, and in a sense, that they, they mattered as, as a person. I remember going into his restaurant in, in downtown Tacoma, and I was just amazed at all the ways that he can make stuff, full of stuff in a room, looked like it belonged there, and that to me was Ken. Whatever you came at him with, whatever he did, he always created that, you belong to him, you matter, you are capable, and you were, you were as beautiful as what he created in his bouquets, and also his dishes. His dishes was beautifully prepared and thoughtfully done, and he always made sure that you always left with a full stomach and dessert as well. And so, I, whenever I think of the City of University Place, I think of that spirit that he has left behind, but that spirit will always be here amongst us, especially in the spring when we see all those yellow daffodils popping up. You know, I, I always made a comment to Ken, saying that, you know, y'all may think they have the, you know, the rights to be the daffodil city in, in the county, but I think because of you, University Place has been beat. So with that, I'll close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, do you have any comments at this time?
I do, Madam Mayor. You know, just listening to, to the comments that everyone has made this evening and, and recognizing Ken, Councilmember Mayor Grassi, I, I think, in summary, there's no question that he has left a indelible mark on everyone's heart and in everyone's mind, and really is, emulates the spirit of this city. I, I don't have a lot of comments tonight, I'll be seeing more later, but, you know, Ken was not only just a colleague, but obviously, I think several folks know, he was one of my closest, closest friends. And I don't think words will ever capture the being that this individual was, and, and the contributions he made to truly making this city great, so, you know, I thank our city manager and everyone tonight who's had comments about Ken, and I, I know on behalf of his family, they're, they are deeply, deeply appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. I don't have any report outs, but yes, I do have comments. So, I had the honor and the privilege of sitting next to Ken Grassi as a councilmember, and I watched him, and I learned from him, and I saw someone who had such a love for the University Place community. It was a privilege to, to be able to, to be next to him when I had that opportunity. It wasn't as long as I'd wished for. There was a lot to be seen, a lot to be learned and appreciated there. He was the mayor when I first came on council, and he epitomized a, a good mayorship as well. The, the heart and soul that he puts into the community, and, and has been said, the way he shares his love with people around him is, was amazing, and will certainly be lost. He had many, many accomplishments in this community, and certainly has left his mark in many ways, and we are who we are because of the efforts and the love that he has shown the University Place community from the start to the city to, to, well, just recently. While there's many reasons to remember Ken, there was a conversation, I recall, several years ago, and we were talking about on the council, it might have been at a retreat, in any case, he was talking in the council, and he, it was about the daffodils and how the program that it's developed, and which daffodils are used, and all of that, and someone had said, gee, Ken, you're going to be known as the king of the daffodils. And he said, I'd be proud to be the king of the daffodils. Well, there's many, many reasons to remember Ken's accomplishments, because there are many storied accomplishments, but in my own mind, I'll be thinking about him as being, if he wants to be remembered as the king of the daffodils, he certainly is to me, so. But thank you, thank you all, and appreciate a chance to comment.
I want to thank all my councilmembers for your eloquent depiction and sharing the memories of Ken Grassi. I can't help but look at our daffodils and flower baskets and think of the man and the beauty that he wanted to instill, and I think that's a legacy that we on council should honor in some format going forward, and, and ensuring that our community remains a beautiful place for people to come and visit. I just, I had to break down this afternoon as I was walking my dog, and I saw the, the retail complex, people were working on the roof putting up lights, and I remember at Christmas time, that was always his thing, to light up UP and businesses, and just seeing that as a reminder that this is something that Mr. Grassi stood for and, and honored is, is a legacy that, that I will always cherish. He was the kindest man that I have encountered. He was never a politician, he was always a person of the community, and for that, I will ever be grateful to him and his family for sharing his time with us. So if there are any businesses, owners that are listening to this recording or this, I would highly encourage all our business owners throughout University Place, especially this season, to light up your businesses, and for even our community members, light up your home in honor of Mr. Grassi, the wonderful things he did, and in the springtime, let's get out there and get some more flowers planted and honor the, think of Mr. Grassi as the daffodils pop up in the springtime, and know that even if he is gone, we still have his memory that we can share and, and see when we look at the beauty that is around us, that is the University Place, that, that he helped to, to create. So he will definitely be missed, and, and we are in support of his family, and we wish them a wonder, a, a time going through this and knowing that he has the support, they have the support of our, our community, and that Mr. Grassi was well admired and liked and loved in this community. Okay. This evening, our next item on the agenda is our study session. This is the study session that unfortunately, due to technological difficulties, we had to reschedule for this evening. It's the senior center discussion. We were to have received a, a presentation by Sheila Phillips, the Community Connection Place president, and she is here this evening, along with some of her representatives, to provide us with that presentation, and then an opportunity for questions and answers afterwards. Mr. Kizer, did you have any comments to open this segment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be very brief. This is-
This is the second of three study sessions which currently appear on the council calendar. At our first study session last month, we went over briefly the contractual overview with the senior center to briefly recap. It's two five-year terms. The first of those five-year terms is set to expire at the end of the year. And council has some decision points coming up related to that. This second study session is the opportunity, as the mayor touched a few minutes ago, to hear directly from CCP to whom the senior center has been leased. At our next study session, tentatively appearing on calendars, the opportunity for council to have fuller discussion regarding the various range of options for the senior center. So without any further ado, I'll be quiet and I'm happy to yield the floor back to council as well CCP for their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kaser. Good evening, Ms. Phillips. I'm glad you were able to come and join us in person and provide us with your presentation.
I have a slide, is it going to be able?
Can you please speak into the microphone? There you go. Pull the microphone a little closer to you so we can all hear.
Okay, okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
You need to bring it closer, we can't hear.
Good evening, Mayor Belicee and Howard Lee, Councilmember Howard Lee, excuse me, and all the council members.
Can you speak up?
All the council members that are here and present. I thank you for this opportunity for us to come. Some of the seniors have joined me and I think one of my staffs here. We're here to give a report on the Community Connection Place and the Community Center for the seniors and the youth. We've been very fortunate and blessed to be able to use that facility down on 2534 Grandview Drive for five years. It was very exciting to start this. And believe it or not, I had a moment too, Mayor, when I was getting dressed and trying to figure out what I was going to wear. I used to love going to Councilmember Ken Grassi's boutique shop. And I stayed in the restaurant eating his famous Italian wedding suit. And so I wore this top in honor of him because he came in and said, what do you want, young lady? And we were trying to find out what I like. And him and his retail ladies that were there decided that this is one blouse that I should purchase. So, I will always savor this blouse because this was one thing that he picked for me to wear. He was greatly admired by me. I knew him for a long, long time because my family's been established in this community. And he provided many flowers for them for many occasions. But one thing I do stick out is when I came to him after I opened a childcare center in University Place, I went to him to talk to him about a community center for this community. And it's a long story and I won't go into that now. But he served me the Italian wedding suit. As everybody know, he loved to serve people too. And we talked about the community center and he talked about the center down on Grandview. And he told me, he says, no matter what you do, whatever you do, do it with passion and love. And that always stuck with me. And he said, and take care of the seniors and the children, they're important. And that is, will always stick with me. In that, this is my presentation. Community Connection Place was formed to build and operate a community center in University Place.
Ms. Phillips, because this is a central mic, you need to speak into it so everybody can hear you.
Just keep, okay, all right. Community Connection Place was formed to build and operate a community center in University Place. It was designed to focus on the youth and the seniors. And we used the Grandview Center, which was set aside for a community center for seniors. And we were able to establish a intergenerational program with seniors working with children. Our vision when we started doing this as a group was to fill the activities for families and engaged seniors. We envision a community center that provides areas for residents with opportunities for education, recreation, social and connection.
If you need staff to advance your slides, you need to let them know.
Okay, next please.
Yeah.
Next please, thank you. Next please.
There you go.
Okay. Our community needs senior community outreach. It needs resource centers, community space and youth research outsourced. Next please. The current need, there are approximately 35,000 residents in University Place according to World Population Review. Of the current population, 5,553 are seniors, approximately 5,000 of them are youth. There are many residents that have to travel outside of the community to seek for recreational programs and resources. Some travel as far as King County to place their children or children's in available programs. Since the COVID disaster, we have seen the need of this to increase, especially with seniors attendance and tremendous demand looking for social skills. Next please. This is just a graph to show you that where we're at. 50% are adults. Then we have 29% seniors and 21% children. Next please. Community Connection promotes partnership, resources and activities. Next please. Partnerships. CCP has partnered with other nonprofit programs provide additional services and resources for our senior citizens in Pierce County. Catholic Community Service, OSPI, Goodwill, University Place School District and local churches. Next please. The resources. CCP has been able to provide meals to the following throughout the pandemic. Seniors, at-risk youth, homelessness, families affected by the COVID-19. CCP has been able to provide programs for children and seniors. Next please. Meet the staff. Next please. We have numerous seniors that work with us with the children. Kathy Wellman, Janice Loomis, Catherine Clayton and then Sheila Phillips. Shamsal Charday, she's not a senior, but she works with us. Next please. Our funding comes from many resources. Our overhead responsibility is rent, maintenance, utilities, insurance, taxes and payroll. CCP has various funds that pay for daily operation expenses. You will see the graph on the next page. Due to the COVID, we've had some restrictions. And one was, we weren't able to rent the facility as we were renting it before. This facility was used for community activities to be rented by people that had either memorial services, graduation, celebration for birthdays, holidays and et cetera and et cetera. But those particular services had to be diminished because of the COVID-19. So our resources went strictly to revenue. And that was our before and after school program, our grants, our donations. And basically, that's it. We didn't get much for rental at all. It decreased because of the COVID. Next please. 70% of our income came in for the COVID was 70%. So it kind of stayed the same before the COVID and after the COVID because we had the children. And then 10% was the donations and 20% was grants that we received during the COVID time. And that's pretty much has stayed the same too, before the COVID. Next please. The cut down. Next please. Thank you. The senior programs were placed on hold due to the COVID-19 restrictions. We weren't able to allow the seniors to come to the, inside the facility. That was very distrusting to me. We use electronic flyers and emails to keep the seniors engaged through this difficult experience. Meals were made available three times a week. We serve Monday, Wednesday and Friday for the seniors to come pick up meals. Those that weren't able to come pick up, they would contact us and we would deliver the meals in the van that we received through a grant through Pierce County Transit. And we continue to give meals to them now that Catholic Community Service is back on board and serves meals on Friday, but they serve them only to go. We've been allowing them to stay in the facility to socialize with one another in the to-go food that they provide and to play bingo and peenuckle. Next please. This is open for questions and remarks. I once again want to thank the city council members for allowing Community Connection Place to participate with the seniors and to do the youth program down at the building on 2534 Grandview Drive for the five years that we've had. It's been a great experience for us. We hope and pray we can continue to use that facility to continue to add more programs. We've been working with partnering with other organizations to come in and help us to facilitate more activities for the seniors and also for the youth. And just to continue to grow. And our goal and dream has always been visioned to get a community center built in the community of University Place. So not only just seniors and children come, but everybody can participate.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We're, at this time, we are open for questions from council. Councilmember Fleming, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for that great presentation. You know, one thing I've always espoused to is the importance of both the youth and the seniors in our community. And I am excited about the programs and the presentation you've given this evening. My one question is this, and that is looking forward into 2022 and beyond, what do you see as the role of this center in terms of services? And how do you see that growing to continue supporting the community?
Well, as you know, we're still dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. But one great thing I'm excited about is, and I knew it was happening because we have a marvelous grant writer who joined us. He wrote grants for the Tacoma Rescue Mission, John Humphrey, who's involved with this, our program and has been excellent in getting us grants and getting us support. He's one of the ones that spearheaded for us to get the van for the seniors and the children through Pierce Transit. He, grants are coming down like a river right now to help out businesses and nonprofits to continue to stay operating. And so that's what has sustained us besides the revenue of the children. So in growth, our goal was in 2022 was really, hopefully, our vision was to break ground and start working toward building a community center. But because of COVID, we weren't able to spearhead all the projects that we had for capital fundraising and grants in 2020 and 2021. So now we are back on board of just launching out to see where we can navigate to get the funding and the capital resources to stay on track to build a community center and to thrive. We were, we stayed open during COVID for the children because the state, because we're sponsors through OSPI and we did summer meal programs through our camp, contacted us and asked us, will we be willing to stay open? Keep the facility open for first responders and that's what we did. And so they supported us through grants that were available to stay operating for that program. We were also able to partner with OSPI to do those meals for the seniors for those three times a week with donations that we received from outside resources. So we do see us growing. The seniors, back in July, when we decided that we should open it back up for them to come, we had them come and they collectively, I think it was 40 of them showed up at that one particular meeting in July wanting to continue having programs, wanting to come out because they said this was their only activities that they can really engage in. And Catholic Community Service was still, was willing to start serving the meals in the facility. So it's continuously grown, we're seeing it continually grow on a weekly basis of seniors coming out. We had some seniors with some concerns. We addressed them. We had a meeting with them last week and we addressed them. And we're working on them starting their own senior coalition to partner with Community Connection Place and they be under our umbrella so they can have their own voice and say in their community with other seniors and getting other seniors involved in programs. So in that saying, our grant writer has said funds are coming down for seniors and youth through the state and through the feds that he's looking at to get, to help us, support us to continue these programs and operate the programs that we're operating right now.
So you mentioned just now about groundbreaking and building of a community center. Would that community center be privately owned or publicly held? And if you're looking at groundbreaking, where were you planning to build that?
Well, we've been partnering with the school district for about four, about four, almost close to five years holding our summer camps. They have property that's available that we've talked to before in, way in the beginning. And also, we do know that our lovely city has property already set aside at the Cirque Park to build a community center. So would it be privately owned? It would be publicly owned and on a nonprofit. And hopefully, the city engaged in us building that community center for this community.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember McCloskey. No, I have to put you in. There you go, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sheila, I want to thank you for that presentation. It was very informative and I just appreciate, I remember back when we lost, we were unable to fund recreation and senior services. And it appeared that we were going to have to close that building, shutter it up. You were the only organization, only person that stepped up and filled that gap with the services that you now provide. And I want to thank you for that. No one else stepped up and you did. And so during these five years, you have provided services that we would have not had had you not done that. I appreciate that, thank you. I do have a couple of questions, service related. The first one is engaging with the community. I've always found that to be a challenging subject. And on several points throughout your presentation, you talked about engaging with the seniors. And I noticed that you use electronic flyers and emails. I found that the senior population is really not that tuned in to using technology. How do you go about doing that?
Well, when we first started, we had, when the seniors come in, we asked them to fill out, well, they actually sign in. That's our way of keeping how many seniors we have come in the facility, tracking. That's what our grant writer asked us to do. The next thing we asked for is their current address and their email and their phone number. The ones that don't, are not electronically savvy like me depend on phone calls or something in the mail. We have, when we resumed back to bring the seniors coming back in, we had a volunteer, she's a very nice woman, Karen, who came in, I contacted her. And she got on the phone and started calling the seniors. Because I'm a senior too and most of us do like personal phone calls. I still am learning how to do emails and all the other electronic stuff. But that was one, one of the ways that we did it is we did personal phone calls. And then some of the other ones that we didn't, we lost track with or we didn't, couldn't correspond with, we contacted, the ones that come in, they have their own, they have their own social network. So we kind of knew who was friends with who and who partnered with who. And we asked them, could they, could they contact that individual for us?
Excuse me, you mean the, did you say that the seniors have their own social network?
Yes, they contact each other and let each other know by word of mouth. By either neighbor or they fellowship in other areas. And they contact one another and let one another know what's going on. And so that's how we got the word out. We post, we post the flyers. And so that's how we got the word out. We post, we post the flyers on the outdoors, I mean, in the windows of the building. We posted on inside the building and we pat, we make sure that they're available so they can take, as many as they want to take out. We've had seniors that when they came for to pick up meals, sack lunches, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, when we were doing the pandemic, they would take other, extra meals to their other seniors to make sure that they got a sack lunch.
Okay.
If they weren't able to come out or they didn't contact us for one. So they work with each other. And so last week, when I had a meeting with them, that's what they want. They want to form their own little coalition group. So they will spearhead on taking care of the population of the seniors in our community and letting them know what's available and what's going on.
Okay. Roughly, how big of a mailing list have you got for seniors? Just roughly? Is it, just, that's fine.
Oh, no, I can answer your question. Just one moment. Right now, we have 59 seniors that come in on a regular basis, Monday through Friday.
Okay, 59, okay.
We have a total of 5,913 for the year that are unduplicate that come to our center.
Okay.
Okay. So on the mailing list, we have close to a, believe she said, 215 on our mailing list, even though our population's 5,000, so, or more. So we had a meeting last week with the seniors that wanted to, wanted to form their own coalition group so we can know how to reach the other seniors in the community. Because one of the things they felt is the seniors, some of them, a lot in this community, didn't know where we're located down on Grandview. We left the senior sign there that the city has that beautiful sign in the corner by the flower. But they said, well, maybe we should put something up where it says Senior Community Center for Community Connection Place. So we're looking at doing something like that. We know that if we put a banner, we can only hold it for so long and you have to pay a permit fee. So we're trying to figure out different ways on how to connect with our seniors. The other population of seniors are not coming, that could be coming, to help assist them in knowing, and I mean, we were going to contact the city too. We talked about that and possibly getting our flyers on their website for our seniors if they are connected electronically by the computer. I know there used to be a kiosk downstairs with two of our seniors that used to help spearhead that to get information. We talked about taking flyers to the different locations where the seniors' residents live and also giving it to their apartment managers and things like that, or the condominiums.
Okay.
And giving information out to the seniors. So we can target more of our seniors in our population here.
Okay, great. I got one other service-related question, but before I move on, I think that your youth figure of 5,000 is a little underrated. I know that the school district has over 6,000 in the school district. So you've got, you know, there's 6,000 right there and then you've got under, children that are younger and aren't school age. So there, the, the number of youth in our community is much more than, than 5,000. Anyway, I'd like to move on to the, the meal program.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, it's important, I think, to the seniors, both for nutrition and then the camaraderie that's involved when, when the meals are eaten. So the Catholic Community Service provide the meals, correct?
On Friday, yes. They, they started back, they resumed back in May of 2021. Before that, we were, we were supplying the meals and we have, we're, we're regulated by OSPI, the USDA Food Service people.
Are we under contract, are they under contract with you?
Yes.
So you, you actually run the program then? I mean, you're the administrator of that contract?
No. Community Connection, all they do is they, they, we're under contract for us to, them to use the facility, the kitchen and to serve the meals there for the seniors on Friday.
Then who, who administers that contract?
I, the, the Community Connection administrates the contract. We just, they use our, they, they contract with us to use the facility. They, they were doing it prior before we took over. So we renegotiated with them to continue to use the facility, the kitchen, the commercial kitchen and the, the dining, the, the main area where they sit down and eat.
So Community Connections Place administers the contract with Catholic Services?
Yes.
Okay. And I understand, I was talking to the supervisor for that program, and she said that we're, we're about, that the numbers of meals served pretty much reflects the, the size of the population. So we, we serve about 20, 20 meals or so, 25 meals a week. Tacoma or, she serves about 40 and somebody like, in a smaller city would, seven or eight. So we, we do real well. The, so you, you control the hours that, that these, that these meals are served? In other words, 11 to 12 or 12 to 1 or whatever?
No, Catholic Community Service sets the hours of when the meals are being served. It was from 12 to 12:30, but during the pandemic, because the meals were to go, they served them outside the facility. The people, the, our clients would come, our seniors would come, pick the meals up and leave. But starting in July, I said, why don't they be able to sit down and be able to eat their meal there even though it's in a to-go container and play bingo and then have their meal and have social?
Okay.
But the mandate has changed. We have, we had to make some changes and we gave until October 8th where they have, they're, it's required to everywhere, everybody wears a mask inside the facility now. And also, the mandate is they have to be vaccinated.
Okay.
Catholic Community Service. So now, if they vaccinated and they wear the mask, they can sit there and have the meal inside the facility. Still, though, it's a to-go, to-go container. If they're not vaccinated, wear the mask, they can take the meal to leave.
Okay. Are you still, are you still serving meals three, three times a week?
We stopped when Catholic Community Service picked, came back on board in May of 2021. What we are getting ready to start, which is tomorrow, is Soup Spectacular, where they'll come in and have soup. And that was a program that started before we came in too, and we had picked that back up. We will be serving soup, sandwich, and salad and a dessert one fir, the first Tuesday of each month. The cook would like to do it every Tuesday, but we need to, first, we need to convey that everybody has to either have vaccinations or a mask.
So how long, I, I just, I don't understand. So Catholic Community Services has just started up serving meals again?
They started back up in May of 2021.
May of 2021?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. They had completely stopped with all senior programs as far as serving meals. And then they kicked back in, meals to go in May of 2021.
Okay. Once again, I want to thank you, thank you for your presentation. I also want to thank you for stepping up at this period of time in our city when we needed to have community services and, and no one else would do it, and, and you did. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
That's all.
Yeah. Council, Councilmember McCluskey, followed by Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Mayor Bellici. Five years ago, I guess when we cut the recreational programming and we were closing the senior center doors, that really concerned me deeply. I didn't want to leave our seniors out. They needed that essential services that the seniors' center was providing for their health and wellbeing, their social connectivity, and also engagement for the long-term longevity as well. So I did not want to, and sometimes the seniors feel that they're the forgotten citizens in University Place. And I did not want them to feel that way at all. So upon meeting with Ms. Phillips and also the, by God's grace, getting the Milgard grant to come on board as seed money, Sheila, who had no history, no expertise in running a senior center, she came from the world of providing preschool and before and after-school services for children, had to figure it all out in less than two months, get it up and running, and keep those doors open for the seniors, in which she did. I mean, that's huge. Can you imagine upstarting a new business or a new business department in less than two months? That's amazing and outstanding, but, but she did it and she kept the seniors, who was so afraid that on December 31st, when they came back in January, that door would be locked and they would be locked out. And that did not happen. They came in and it was business as usual with coffee, treats, events, you know, happy birthdays to, to the seniors, making them feel special. And also, they were dovetailing into an intergenerational community center there. So Sheila had to also look at sustainability because as we know, which we were looking at prior to having to close out our recreational services in University Place, is that the seniors' services and their programming were not sustainable. They, they could not hold their own. And so they needed other additional funding in order to, to do that. And so she, Sheila bringing on the, her preschool, or primarily there at that center, it was before and after-school care, as you could see from the numbers on both pre and post-COVID, that strategic in keeping those doors open to date, even through COVID. And many senior centers are still closed and some of them are still closed to date. They had not reopened up their doors. Our doors are open to the seniors and whatever programs that they want, they can, Sheila would accommodate them and they could have whatever during the daylight, daylight hours. So I think that's really important to, to note that the, the doors, unless it was a state mandated program, the, the doors were always, was always open. She was always there to aid and assist. Whether they were able to come on site, they made sure their health and wellbeing were being taken care of. And so that, that is, I think that is very commendable for her staff as well as her heart and passion for our community and the citizens of all ages, especially our, our youth and our, our seniors. And as we know during COVID, our childcare programming was very difficult to, for parents who wanted to, to work, to, to find providers for, you know, unless you were essential workers. And so that created a lot of economic hardship for, for families that are still hurting. And Sheila was, was able to continue a lot of those social services. Whenever she comes across barriers, she seems to be able to have that creative edge and the tools in her toolbox to pull out some sort of magic trick in order to get it done. And that is especially true when she started the summer camp at Evergreen Primary, partnering with, with the schools and continuing that partnership to date, to have a full, vibrant program, to continue in University Place. So, and I think that's something that the, the council should, should be proud of as well because we do have senior services that are continuing. And, and as you heard from her presentation, they, they will continue in forthcoming. So I have just a question for, for Sheila. Because I know there were one issue that had evolved from the seniors in regards to the coordination of the services. Because the seniors were feeling that they, that they were what one senior indicated as, you know, a stepchild to, to the Community Connection Place. And I would like to hear maybe how you resolved that or how you, you were able to, because I know you had a meeting with, with the seniors earlier on, how you were able to mitigate that, that issue. Because I certainly did not want the seniors to feel like they were, you know, stepchildren. And I know you don't feel that way in your heart. And, and so I'd like to hear your comments in regards to that.
Well, when I received that information, my first response was to, my administrator is to contact them by email or by phone to set up a meeting so we can find out the concerns that they had and how we can help assist them and address those concerns. So we can continue to have the programs thriving and moving forward and what did they, what did they want, what did they need to serve them. Seniors are my passion and my heart. And so it's important, and I've always been mandated by my grandparents that, to never forget about them or the children. Because they are the legacy and the foundation of where we stand now. And it's important that they know that we are willing to help assist them and provide what they need of whatever resources there are that we can help them with. So we had that meeting last week and we talked about everything. I listened to everything they wanted, what they wanted to do. And I gave the idea that why don't they find, file a, to come together and file a coalition and that they would have their own separate entity under Community Connection Place with grants and funds that they can navigate on the things they would like to see done with a program director over the seniors so they can help them and assist them. And that that director would come to the head administrators of Community Connection Place and everybody would work together as a partner so that we continue to thrive. Because that's important to me, that this community thrives and they can't just thrive on the millennial generation. It has to thrive on all three components, the youth, the millennials, and the, and the seniors. And we're all heading in that direction. So we might as well embrace it and work together on it. I was tickled with the technology thing going on when we were waiting patiently. And we just had a discussion about how we, we are so far behind that things are changing so rapidly that within five years, things have changed. It used to be 10 years, but now it's five years. So getting back to your question, Councilmember Denise McClinsey, is that it's important that we hear their voice. It's important, no matter what it is that they have concerns about, that we address them and that we make them feel that whatever they want to happen or see happen, that we be able to do it within our, within our means.
Okay.
And so they've got, they've, they've got that and they know that they are welcome and willing to come. Also, I was going to say, I'm, I, I got it where, I, I got it now where I have someone that sits at the table to greet them when they come in the door, make sure that they get the information that they need, and make sure that there's any concerns or comments that there's follow-ups on it immediately.
And what I'm also hearing you describe is that possibly that the seniors will start creating a sustainable program as far as economics, you know, their financial stability to help grow their programming as well?
Yes. We, we've talked about membership dues and we also talked about the, the grants that are, the funding donations, our grants or inclined donation come in, that they have their own collective group, that they can have a budget, they can sit down and discuss the things they would like to do within their own program.
All right. And that's going to be under the umbrella of the Community Connection Place. So that, so the CCT will, will still have oversight?
Correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Keel, you had your hand raised for a comment or a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Phillips, I just want to thank you for your presentation. I thank you for your passion and your tenacity around the work that you've done with, with seniors and with youth. And I tell you, as you well know, I, I've been a firsthand witness of that tenacity and passion several times in the community. When you, won't say cornered me, but I would say you spoke with me about the work that you want to do in our community. And, and I appreciate it. And, and certainly you have proven that you are serious about And certainly you have proven that you are serious about what you spoke about in these five years. And so I just tip my hat to you and to all of the people that you work with. Our community has been the better for it and it's just been real great. So continue. I tell you, I had another opportunity to really feel very much connected to CCP when Pierce Transit was able to donate the van to you all. That was a great moment. And it sounds like you're getting a lot of use out of it, which is exactly the point. So great work with that as well. I don't, and I can't speak for my colleagues, but I will say I get the sense that we all are very supportive of the work that you do. And as a city, I think we are, we're wanting to see your continued success. And as an individual council member, I'll tell you, I am prepared to hear what you have to say and what you need and to do whatever I can as an individual council member to make sure that that happens for CCP and for the seniors and for the teens in our city. Because as we've all said, we realize that that's important. It's something that we had as a deficit in the city and you all stepped up to do it and we want to support you as much as we can. So with that said, and I do mean that sincerely, with that said, I do want to, I have a couple of questions about, you know, about the program. I had the opportunity to go pick up one of the books that you gave, one of the three ring binders that you left at our city attorney's office. And so I was reading through that and I just had a couple of questions. One question was on, there's a graph, there's a bar graph, there's no page numbers on here, but it's a programs and activities bar graph. You talk about camp connections, before and after programs, special events, health and wellbeing activities. And so the bars are going horizontal and then the Y axis is a 0 to 3,500. You got the bar graph? So what's, what is the, what's the 3,500? Is it days? Is it hours? Is it dollars?
It's the way, it's the way the graph, when she put it into the computer, here I go again with my lack of computer skill. But it's the way my administrator did the graph. The graph came with that type of bar chart of showing from zero activities to 30 to 3,500 participants. And we have not reached the 3,500 participants as far as on a daily basis. So she, the way the graph was, but when we went, our grant writer sent us something for us to fill out. And when we went back and we looked at how many participants really came through that center for the year of, that he asked for of 2020 and 2019, we calculated, well, 2020 wasn't at 5,000, but it, unduplicated clientele came in at 5,913 that have come through that door to participate.
Got it. So that's what I was wondering, what was it? Was it 3,500 people, right? So it's not hours, dollars, it's 3,500 people, the number of people that came through that program for that year. Okay. That's perfect.
If you want to know how many hours, I can tell you that too because we had to do all that for him.
I bet, yeah, I bet you do. If you're doing a grant, they definitely want to know the hours and the dollars. So no, I was just trying to get, you know, trying to get an understanding of the graphic, right? And so that was, that helps me out a whole lot. And as we go forward, there are a lot of other things. And I shared some stuff with the city manager too as well and I'll share it with you. And maybe you can copy it down and maybe work with us or work with city staff to make this happen. I am aware of something, there's an organization called the Association of Washington Cities. They have a grant from OSPI, and I know you work with OSPI now, but OSPI has given, has a grant that they're letting AWC administer where they're going to give millions of dollars to, across the state, to agencies to do youth programs for the summer. And so I would just encourage you to have your grant writer reach out to AWC so that you can get connected. And you might have to go through the city because it is AWC thing. I don't know all the particulars. But that would be something of, would be of interest to you as well.
Okay.
And then the last thing that I just want to say is that, you know, in your, like I asked about this graphic, you know, I will be willing to help in connecting to resources that really can help with the technology piece. Because as your grant writer could probably tell you and others, that it's really important to get the technology piece down when you're putting in for grants. And it sounds like you're doing pretty good already because you're getting a lot of them. I would just say going forward that that whole presentation of what's on paper really, I think is a plus when you're going out trying to get money from other folks.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I will, I will be contacting you.
Yeah. I mean, I can point you to other resources. I don't know if I can get fingers on a keyboard. I wouldn't have time for that, but I know, I know, I know a guy.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. I didn't see any other council members raise their hand. Did anybody want to ask some questions? Okay. We are running a little bit short on the allocated time for this. But Ms. Phillips, I do want to thank you for coming this evening. I personally want to thank you for stepping in when you did five years ago because the senior program was definitely in jeopardy. And I know that this was not something that was in your vision, that your vision has always been the passion for your children. And you did, you have been providing an opportunity for seniors to have a place to have their programs going since then. And COVID did put a major twist into everything that you were doing. But I was wondering if you could tell me, what are your senior program hours versus your childcare hours that you have at that facility?
Okay. So in the morning, I'm there at 6:30 to open the door up for the children. They're there until 7:30, about 7:30, 7:35. They have to be at school. We transport those that have to go to school that come there in the morning. That roughly ranges anywhere from 10 to 15 children. And then the seniors program starts at 9:00 AM and it runs until, well, they start wrapping up between 2:30 and 3:00 PM. The children start coming back about 3:00 PM. The children are there from 3:00 PM until 5:30. And then the center is closed. The office hours are from 9:00 to 4:00. So the seniors roughly have from 9:00 until 3:00 PM. Most of them wrap it up about 2:30.
Okay. I know many senior programs have somebody that is specialized in running senior programs. How many staff do you currently have that are dedicated solely to the senior program versus the children?
We had one. She's no longer with us because of the COVID. She left with us. She left in 2021 because it just doesn't look like the seniors were going to get to come back anytime soon. So she operated our program. Right now, I've been putting out fillers, looking for a program director. Basically, when I first came back, we started seniors back, I had a meeting with the seniors, all of them. We sent out the word. They came and I think we have over 40 came. And we asked them, what would you like to see resume back or happen or change? And most of them wanted what they already had, that the programs that we already had already established. And that would be from yoga to mahjong to book club to, well, we couldn't get the Tai Chi guy back. He, his whole business just shut down. And then we did Domino's art and they come, they come out pretty fully on Thursday. And then Friday was the bingo and Catholic community service meal and then peanuckle. What I've done is I've contacted some other people of interest that like run Mercy Housing over in Tacoma Pierce County. I know the head director over there and I've got someone that does my lunches for me, not me, but for Community Connection on Saturday, Sunday. She worked for Tacoma Housing. They've been wanting to partner with me to help bring in more programs for the seniors. So we're like, we just started back to soup spectacular and we're looking for someone to come from Mercy Housing that does, teaches Tai Chi and there's a, what do you call it? It's a dance. I can't think of the name of the dance. But anyway, it teaches, it's senior appropriate for seniors, our exercising program. We have a sewing club that's interested in coming in because we are the only, pretty much, Pierce County, a lot of their recreational is not up and running. So basically the word is getting around that Community Connection down there. In University Place, our city has availability. We're getting a lot of contacts from people wanting to use our facility to bring programs in there. We've been getting that in the last, in September, starting in September. So we're looking at different entities coming in and bringing in programs. And hopefully our seniors, they will partner with us and our seniors will engage in it. We did contact, we did look at the September the 7th presentation from Pierce County for the disabled adults and youth because I do work with children that have disability and different types of behavioral problems. And I did contact them to see if they were interested in partnering with Community Connection and using, because we have Monday and Wednesdays that are available, bringing those individuals in and using our facility to provide their services there. They haven't got back with us yet, but I did try to contact them to have a meeting with them to do that. Because I think it would be in our advantage for them to use our facility because the residents are coming, leaving our community, going somewhere else. And that's always been my problem with that is why do our residents in our community have to leave their place and go somewhere else to get services when we can accommodate it here? So I'm hoping that they'll get back with us and we can work something out for that. On that note, and I know they want it one day and they want it a week for camp. And I figured with our children going to camp and using the school for camp for eight, seven to eight weeks, they can have the facility to run a camp there. We would have to be a little bit more concerned on the days. Like I said, Monday and Wednesday, the seniors really don't use it. So those days that would be available for them to use that, those days for their program if they were interested. So those are the kind of things that we want to embrace and bring it in more into our community center. It's not a very large place, but it just continues to give us more of the drive and the desire as a community to know that we need to build something so we can facilitate these programs for everybody.
Well, again, thank you very much for coming in and I'm glad we didn't have the technological problems this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
At this time, we are going to go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the 1% property tax levy. May I have our finance director, Leslie Blaisdell, come on screen, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director. We received the preliminary certification of assessed values from Pierce County on September 16th and will receive final values in late December. According to Pierce County Assessor Treasurer Mike Lonergan, residential property values went up in Pierce County due to a red hot real estate market. Commercial properties showed either slight or no value increase during the past year due largely to COVID-19 limitations on retail hospitality and office activity. Apartment buildings and warehouses both had double-digit percentage increases in response to demand for affordable housing and online ordering and distribution. The worksheets provided to us by the county assessor assumes the implicit price deflator, or IPD, is more than 1%. We will receive amended calculations should the IPD notification fall below 1%, but we don't expect that to happen. Based on the figures provided by the county, the dollar amount of the increase over the actual levy amount from the previous year will be $41,457.87, which is a percentage increase of 0.9122% from the previous year. The 2122 adopted budget includes the statutorily allowed levy limit increase in the city's add-on property tax in 2022. All property revenue received by the city is dedicated to the Police and Public Safety Fund. Police contracted expenses increased by 3% annually. And for each dollar paid in property taxes in 2021, the city received 7 cents. To implement the 1% increase for 2022, it is necessary to adopt an ordinance imposing the increase in the regular property tax levy. The 2021 assessed valuation, which is what's used to determine our 2022 tax levy, increased by 15.1%. Applying that increased percentage to the 2021 average value of a family residential home results in an average home value of $532,970. Keep in mind, these are estimates based on the figures we have at this point. So this would result, applying the estimated 2022 property tax levy rate of 0.7755 to that average home value results in an additional $6.14 in property tax paid to the city. This $6.14 includes the increase due to property value as well as the 1% increase being proposed. So historically, there's been very little change from the preliminary certification numbers to the finals. Just a slight change due to anyone who appealed their values and any changes made between the time they sent that in September and the end of the year. So the options that the city council can take regarding this is to levy the property tax without the statutorily allowed increase or implement the statutorily allowed increase commensurate with our 2022 budget. Staff recommends option two. And our next steps is that council consideration and public hearing is scheduled for November 1st, 2021. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell. I see that Councilmember Fleming has raised his hand and he will be followed by Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Leslie, thank you for that summary that you've given us. The $6.14 per household, was that a $6.14 increase per thousand? Or was that on total based on the proper, on an average property value of 500 and some thousand?
That's total.
That's total for the year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Keel, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor. But that was exactly my question that Councilmember Fleming asked. Was it per year or were the $6 less? Thank you.
Okay. And I see Mayor Pro Tem Worthington took his hand down. So I missed, are there any other questions from council at this time? Okay. Councilmember Fleming. You are muted, sir.
I think that's pretty nice then, isn't it? I was going to say, based on what we've heard tonight, my recommendation, and I don't know what the pleasure of council is, but certainly to move this forward to a public hearing so we can hear the public's input.
Yep. It's on for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we are on our second study session of the fireworks code update. And I will ask our chief, Greg Primo, to come on, onto the screen, please. Or Matt Kazer, if he's sitting in for.
We're.
Or you're a duo.
We're a duo, Madam Mayor, but you know, the chief and I were talking earlier today. We were looking at the packet and said it had a lot of legal words. So when it comes to legal words, I'll take it and we'll get the chief off the hook. So, thank you, council. This is, as the mayor indicated, second study session on fireworks code update. Take you back just a little bit. Back in July, as directed by code, we had the opportunity to take a look at the fireworks code, changes, additions, modifications, things that work, things that didn't work. At that time, we, staff identified four potential changes to the code, which council had the opportunity to discuss. There were three of those changes which appeared to garner a council consensus. And we're back tonight talking about those changes in the form of an actual ordinance. But take a step back, if you will. You may recall back in 2018, council passed its initial fireworks code following advisory votes, extensive public outreach and the like, which for the first time imposed restrictions on use, discharge and possession of fireworks in University Place. At that time, baked into the code in University Place. At that time, baked into the code was a request for annual reviews, and then a final three-year discussion. So that's the discussion that we had back in July. The four changes that we discussed, or four potential changes we discussed in July, in no particular order. The first was potential changes to the sales requirement. As council may recall, sales are prohibited under the code unless the sales are made by a nonprofit organization that sells only those fireworks for which discharge is allowed. In the course of the last two years, the city has received no applications for discharge, for seller's permits. In the course of the discussion, it appeared as though there may have been consensus to simply eliminate the requirement altogether and prohibit all sales of fireworks within the city of the University Place. The second was an issue which cropped up primarily this year, which was the issue of emergency restrictions. As, you, you may already know, we had a pretty hot summer, this summer. And there were questions, you know, particularly from citizens, from fire individuals, you may have seen in the news, is there something that we can do to prohibit fireworks on a temporary basis to accommodate weather-related concerns? When we looked at the code, there's no provision in the code. And it's something that a number of jurisdictions had started taking a look at. You may have seen recently in the news, Pierce County just recently enacted a similar provision within the language of the Pierce County Code, that would authorize the emergency restrictions on discharge of fireworks in high fire danger type scenarios. Although our code is not the Pierce County Code, in looking at other codes that had such language, we identified three areas that may serve as triggers for that. One is if a neighboring jurisdiction implements such a prohibition. The idea being, well, if you can, can't do it in other city across city line, why should you be able to do it in University Place? The second is if there's a burn ban, or similar restriction that would prohibit outdoor burning imposed by the Puget Sound Cleaner Agency or local fire official. The idea being, you can't burn outdoors, you might have a fire-related concern. And then the third is if there's adverse weather conditions that make the danger of fire more likely. Now, just because one of those three conditions are met, does not mean that a prohibition kicks in. Ultimately, we give the city manager, the authority, if the city manager so chose to exercise it, to impose the restrictions on discharge. So that's something new that council has not previously seen or previously discussed, but it was something that there was general consensus when we talked about it back in July in terms of moving forward. The third was to fix, an omission, if you will, in the original amendments. Pre-2018 code amendments allowed juveniles under the age of 16 to discharge fireworks with parental permission. The new code says juveniles cannot discharge fireworks at all. The proposed amendment puts that language back in, that they could still do it with parental permit, parental oversight. But again, they can only discharge those fireworks which are authorized for discharge within the city of University Place. The last one that was discussed, that there did not seem to be a clear council consensus on, was whether to revisit or not, or the general prohibition on the discharge of fireworks altogether. One of the things I, I just highlighted in the memo that accompanied the materials for tonight's study session, in the last year or so, and I'm just simply saying or so, because there's one jurisdiction that did it just outside the one-year mark, there, we were able to identify three jurisdictions here within Pierce County, all neighboring jurisdictions, that amended their fireworks codes, that rather than do full prohibitions, shrunk the time for allowable discharge around the Independence Day holiday to just July 4. Those are in various stages because of the one-year lag for fireworks restrictions, to either having been implemented or coming online in the subsequent fireworks season. But as I stated, there didn't seem to be a council consensus on that, but that's something I'll come into council for further discussion. So with that, there is included in the packet a proposed ordinance for general discussion, which encompasses those items which there seemed to be council consensus on. I'm happy to stand for questions or other discussion. And with that, I'll turn the matter back to council.
Okay, I see Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, you have a, you have your hand raised.
I do thank you, Mayor Bellici. This is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington. So, and Matt, thank you for the information and the detail there. Had a question for the Chief, and then give you my, some thoughts. Chief, Chief Primo, have, do you, can you recall, and I don't expect absolute perfect memory here, but can you recall if we have issued a citation or for a, an adult allowing a minor to light a firework?
Not, not in the last three years.
Okay, all righty, thank you. So we're trying to head this one off before we have a long line of folks, or in any case. But while I don't think we will have a long line of folks, and I think our officers use good discretionary judgment, which they're, they're trained to do. In any case, changing that to supervise minors is, seems to me like a direction we, I would be interested in hearing what people have to say about. Emergency restrictions, there have been several years that that's been an issue for us, where weather conditions principally have been a problem. And we just haven't had any legal ability to restrict fireworks use, even though it was a, frankly, a very poor choice in tinder-dry conditions. And so in those limited situations, that would seem to be worth considering as well. And the prohibition of all sorts makes good sense to me as well. Restricted items we have don't really leave much room for profit. And even when we have issued a license recently, we didn't, the, the people holding the license chose not to exercise that ability. So probably because they figured out there wasn't enough there to make it worth their while. I think it's simply if we just prohibit it, from my perspective, is also, just some quick response to thoughts to, for folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Matt, as well as Chief, for, for the work you guys have done on putting this together. I know the hour's late, so I too, I'm going to embrace brevity here if I can. You know, with the idea of just banning sales in the city of University Place, I don't think, I, I don't know what the goal or the objective of that is. It, all it does is it drives folks to other jurisdictions to spend their money and generate tax revenue for that, whatever that amount may be. I, I do favor the city regulating that, whether it's just nonprofits, or if it's anyone with certain guidelines that we can put in place to ensure that it's done safely, would make sense to me. I do, I hadn't heard this before in all the years. We've had the conversation on fireworks, but I really like the idea of having provisions in there for emergency prohibitions, for banned burns, and adverse weather conditions. Makes total sense to, to have something like that in place, so that we are protecting the community. I also like that idea of the amendment. It takes away government regulating kids and puts the responsibility back on, on the parents. With regards to all-out bans, I would say to the Chief, 100% of your predecessors that I know of have always opposed that, only from the standpoint that it creates a false sense or expectation in the community of citizens realizing that if someone sends off a firework, they're gonna call the police, they're gonna respond, and someone's gonna be cited for it. And I've heard repeatedly that a lot, by the time law enforcement arrives on site, almost 99% of the time, whoever the perpetrator is, they're gone. So I, I, I don't want us chasing our tails, but I think if we put safeguards in place to, to certainly ensure the safety and the well-being of the people, I think that's the direction we should go. I, I've never been a real strong fan of regulating down to one day of setting off fireworks, but I think I am beginning to lean in that direction, only so that we don't get so carried away, you know, in the past where they just went on and on and on and on forever. I would certainly be open to hear more conversation on whether it makes sense or not to set them off actually on the day of the holiday, and not so much before or after that, just to ensure there's a balanced peace of mind in the community. So with that, I think I've said everything I needed to say. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Keel?
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. I certainly support getting it down to one day. I think it, you know, the, we've tried, you know, giving people time and, and given parameters, and they still are outside those parameters. And, and guess what? Even getting it down to one day, they're gonna be outside the parameters of the one day too as well. I mean, they'll, they'll be somebody. But at least it begins to try to shrink it down a little bit, to make it a little bit more manageable for us. The other thing is that I, I, I get and I understand and I support the emergency pieces, you know, if there's, you know, if there's a dry spell, and, and you know, all the emergency management stuff, I think that makes good sense. I, I, I too am trying to strug, I'm struggling with the, the, the blocking of the sale. And, and the reason for that is, if our goal is not to have sales or limited, or whatever that, you know, that is, it sounds, it seems like it's already self-correcting, right? So you can sell them, but people aren't doing it because it doesn't, it doesn't profit them. I get it. I mean, this is, you know, free society, you know, capitalism, all that kind of stuff like that. And so that's great. Where I get sideways with it is, is that by us banning the sale, then it makes us the bad guy. Because even if by chance somebody wanted to do it, and they, in their, in their mind, they could make out a little bit, or they wanted to do something altruistically, it's been banned. And so I'm thinking not to ban it, and just let it be there. And if somebody wants to do it within the parameters that we laid out, then they can, you know, and they can figure out, you know, this is America. You can figure out how you can make money, or how you can do, if it's your business deal, do it. But to say we're banning it, doesn't feel right to me. And, and so I, I support everything except for that point.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just one short comment, and that's that we have spent many, many hours trying to qualify the use of fireworks. And the electorate has told us that they don't want fireworks. I say, my feeling is that just ban fireworks, we don't have to worry about any kind of a environmental impact. We don't have to worry about children setting off fireworks. We say no fireworks, and let that be the law of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember McCluskey?
Thank you, Mayor Bellici. As far as an all-out ban of fireworks, that never works. And I always am leaning towards at least giving some parameters where they can do something to celebrate the Fourth of July. You know, it's, it's, some people equate that with a patriotic act. You know, it's a personal choice. And what, what we have, I, I think have really mitigated it down to extremely, extremely, extremely safe, insane fireworks discharge, you know, with the, the ones that are the fountains that are on, on the ground, to the sparklers. I mean, you know, it's not the big boom-booms, but it's, it's a little something for, to, for, for the celebration. I do concur that one day of, of the celebration should be enough on, on the Fourth of July, our, our holiday. And, and so with the sales of the fireworks by nonprofit or organizations, if we don't fully ban the fireworks, providing an opportunity for whatever organization that, that may see that, that they could align a profit, who knows? You know, it gives them that opportunity to do with only the fireworks that are legal in University Place. I think that also, if they set up a stand, also states and reinforces the message of what type of fireworks are allowed in, in University Place. And I wholeheartedly concur with a prohibition in, in case of an emergency situation of extreme fire danger in our community. Managing all that when that happens, that could be a different story, because getting the word out that, at that time, that there is a prohibition, it would be interesting to see how, how that plays out in, in University Place. But I, I think there's something that the city manager, a tool in this toolbox to use, because we are getting into a lot of hotter and drier seasons, and especially with the earlier summer heat, that just immediately dries out the vegetation. I think this is prudent and smart for, for the city to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other city council members that want to weigh in on this? Okay, I will provide my two cents. The sales and discharge prohibiting it is in line with what our voters said in a two-to-one vote. They wanted this to be illegal. However, as we know, those cities, particularly those surrounding us, that have that regulation in place, are not able to, to guarantee silence and non-discharge of fireworks. So I think setting up the expectation that if you do ban it, it's going to be quiet, is not a realistic expectation for the community. And it seems, and it just shows that we make regulations that we can't enforce. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of going the discharge route, or banning the discharge. As far as the sales, I think I'm in line with Councilmember Keel. Allow it to be an option for nonprofits. If sometime in the future, as more jurisdictions start limiting the types of fireworks that are able to be discharged, it may become a more profitable option. Those in our community that want to discharge and discharge the legal stuff, I'd like to see a, a way of providing that information to them easier in the form of a newsletter, on our website, on social media, so that they have the checklist that they can use when they go to our surrounding jurisdictions, to make sure that they purchase the correct types of fireworks to discharge in our community. Emergency restrictions are definitely a must. I think we need to define that. However, we get into a situation, again, where we have an emergency declaration and an expectation that people will not fire off fireworks. And we know they're already not observing the ban on discharging outside of the July 4th timetable. So we, we will still be up against the perception that we don't do anything to enforce our regulations. But I do think we need to have it, so that future council members and our citizens can understand what those limitations are that we're going to place as far as restricting them. So I'm in concurrence with having something codified. I hope as more jurisdictions go down the road of limiting or eliminating the allowability of discharge, that we will find more compliance. I do know that over the past four or five years, since we limited the discharge to Jan, to July 4th, the, the majority of our citizens abide by the hours that are listed in the ordinance, and they do discharge between 9:00 AM and, and kindly stop at midnight. And so for that, I think we should honor those citizens that follow the rules and not make it any more difficult on, on them if they choose to use the legal fireworks. So hopefully, as the years go on, we will see that more and more people will be in alignment with the fact that this is highly densified, that is dry weather out here, and that fewer and fewer people will begin to discharge. And maybe in the foreseeable future, in our lifetime, it will be a silent Fourth of July, or we will find some, some other way to celebrate our, our heritage. our, our heritage and, and celebrate, um, our union. So that's my final word. Are there any other council members that want to weigh in? Does Mr. Kazer have the information that he needs at this point to finalize the ordinance?
Let me just restate it. Yeah, if I can just restate it, um, because I imagine we'll be bringing back this ordinance in final format.
Yes.
Leave the sales provision status quo. Leave discharge status quo, which is currently July fourth, nine AM to midnight. Bring back ordinance, which addresses the emergency conditions and the juvenile piece.
Yep. Yep, I believe that's what most of the council talked about.
Wait a second. Excuse me.
Yes, Ca- Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, uh, so I would still like to have a more structured debate about the sale issue. Uh, I mean, I, this is a good chance to poll council, but, uh.
Okay.
Um, in any case, I, I don't think we all fired all of our ammunition.
Okay.
Uh, we need to get our powder dry and, uh, and then, uh, move forward with it.
I, I'm gonna be ready.
All right.
Councilmember Fleming and Councilmember McClos-, followed by Councilmember McCloskey for final words.
Thank you, Mayor Bellici. Yeah, I was gonna ditto Councilmember Keel's comment, we'll keep our powders dry, but, uh, Matt, I did not hear the, uh, the comment about the sale. I, I thought I heard a semi-consensus about keep with the nonprofits, but, um.
Yeah. The, the sales are only by nonprofits. I was trying to simplify recognizing the hour. What I'll propose then is, we just bring back the same ordinance, we'll take the draft water mark off, so that way you guys can have the more structured debate when this comes back on for final discussion.
Got it, thank you.
I was trying to see if there was, there, I was not correct.
Yeah. All right.
I guess it's time to reload the cannons. I bet they gotta be quiet.
And only between nine and midnight, or nine.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember McCloskey, followed by Ca- uh, Councilmember Keel.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bellici. Well, I, I didn't expect Mayor Pro Tem to be, uh, not fully loaded, who usually comes fully loaded. What's up with that? But so granted. Uh, I also just wanted, just to make a statement, comment, nothing, uh, I've been hearing, uh, and that there was a little short article on fireworks that don't make any sound coming up and evolving, so that might be something for us to consider later on if that comes to fruition. So fireworks may not always, uh, create the big boom-boom sound, it'd just be the rainbows, right?
And unicorns, right?
Yep. Councilmember Keel, did you change your mind about final comments?
I, I did, thank you.
Okay, any other final comments? Okay, I, taking that, um, that was our final item on the agenda. I will call our meeting adjourned.